Folks, please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Pro Tem Clure?
Here.
Mayor Collins?
Here. For the special presentations, we are going to, I'm going to ask the council if they'd like to add an agenda item, the proclamation for the 15th Annual Read Across Siskiyou Event.
So move.
This action needs to be taken immediately, and we need a two-thirds vote. If all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Could we please get a second on the motion?
I'll second the motion.
The proclamation for the 15th Annual Read Across Siskiyou Event is sponsored by First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission, whereas the ultimate goal of the First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission is that all of Siskiyou's children from prenatal through five years of age will be healthy, ready to learn, and supported in safe nurturing families and communities. And whereas children in Siskiyou County from prenatal through five years of age have a successful start in life through daily reading with supportive and nurturing families, caregivers, educators, and community leaders. And whereas early literacy is the foundation of academic, social, emotional, and economic success, and whereas First Five Siskiyou, in partnership with the Siskiyou County Library and Family Community Resource Centers, dedicates one day each year to promote early literacy by providing the same titled book to be read by guest readers to children in various preschools, kindergartens, childcare settings, libraries, and online events through Siskiyou County on the same day, and provide each child with a copy of that book to take home. Therefore, the City of Mount Shasta hereby reclaims November 9, 2022, as the 15th Annual Read Across Siskiyou, and be it that this body enthusiastically endorses daily reading, singing, and playing with children as a critical foundation for the healthy development and lifelong success. I would add that I was down in Monterey at my granddaughter's fifth birthday, and she proudly announced, "She is one whole hand." So on that note, please.
My name is Michelle O'Gorman, and I'm the executive director of Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative, which has seven family resource centers. Of course, she is here in town. And I'm going to pass these out while Rihanna gives you a little bit of information. Karen Potts, the executive director of First Five is here as well.
Hello. My name's Rihanna Ramshaw. I work for First Five Siskiyou. We pride ourselves on our deep roots within our community. That is our entire goal. Within the packet that Michelle is handing out, you'll find flyers for several different programs that we offer, several of which do promote literacy specifically for young children. My personal, or the ones that, excuse me. Within such, you'll find Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, which is a nonprofit, so children from birth until five, once a month, will receive an age-appropriate book mailed to them at no cost to their family. You'll also find Dial a Story, which is a program that we offer where families can call a number and have a story read to their child in both English and in Spanish. We also have within there Ready for K, which is a trauma-informed text-based program. So five times a week, a parent will receive a text message that is age-appropriate for their child, zero to 14, and it will give them tips, advice, and fun activities that they can do with their child to promote learning. Also, it includes oftentimes different events going on across Siskiyou County. You also all received a copy of the book that will be offered for Read Across Siskiyou this year, which is My Tail's Not Wagging, or pardon me. Oh, My Tail's Not Tired, pardon me. And so hopefully, all of us can share that time with a loved one and enjoy sharing our knowledge and the joy of reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, just one.
Of course, Karen.
Thank you so much for having us. And I have to say, this is incredibly special for me, who, as you know, I've lived here for about 18 years, and Rihanna and her family are part of our community. I'm so proud of her. She's a brand-new, recent graduate, almost a year graduate from Cal State Monterey Bay. She grew up in Siskiyou County. She went to our schools. She was actually a Rotarian student that went to Taiwan and was just accepted for a position to go and teach in Taiwan in January. So really, it's our community. I'm so proud of her. It's our community that creates individuals like Rihanna, like Catherine, like Katerina, and, you know, and actually Tessa, who grew up here, too. And we all have the stories. And at the core of that is really promoting the importance of love of learning and love of reading and love of community. So this book is about children or about the little animal who's not tired, who doesn't want to go to bed, who's not tired. And one of the things that we see is there's a high number of families that sometimes struggle with their children going to bed on time. And so this is our way of promoting the importance of not just reading, but sleeping early so that they can have smart brains and they can be successful. So please help us get the word out. We need guest readers. So anybody who wants to be a guest reader, reach out to us so you can read in the community. And most of all, thank you for keeping our community as amazing as it is. Thank you for your service to our community. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen.
Do you have questions? Or is this comments?
No questions, but thank you so much. Every time you guys come, it just makes me so happy and proud that we have the service in our community. And I volunteer in our elementary school library weekly, and it's just so amazing to see those little kids' faces light up. I mean, literacy is something that they are craving at that age, so it's so important to keep it going. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tessa. Yeah, thanks. Appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks. Good to see you all.
We're going to move on to public comment, and we'll start with Nian, who has signed up, and then we'll go to anybody else here, and then on to online.
Hello, everybody. You guys all know me, Nian from Mount Shasta. I wanted to talk a little bit about where Mount Shasta is, where we've come from, and where we're going. And the writing's really on the wall. If you look at all the new businesses that have come into town, they're really modernizing. And then you see things like the walk-bike-ride program. That's adding infrastructure for recreation, right? You see Vive, they're expanding their networks to provide faster and more reliable internet to our community, which is fantastic. What that enables is more remote working and actually being a competitive destination for recreational remote work. So really, the way I see Mount Shasta is we're basically one Bigfoot sighting or UFO landing away from being a major destination. And so, you know, we don't want to be caught like that tiny little town in Oregon when the solar eclipse count came, and it was, you know, a town of 500 people that all of a sudden had 150,000 people show up. So having the infrastructure in place is paramount to preparing for what's to come of Mount Shasta. The days of being a sleepy mediocre, being okay with mediocrity in this town are coming to an end, and we're moving into being the beacon of hope as far as economic prosperity in Siskiyou County. Mount Shasta already collects the highest property tax values in the whole county, but that's going to get even better. And so I highly encourage you guys to pass the bike ride mobility plan as well as the idea of one-way streets. One-way streets, Mount Shasta, in the past, has always done fine with three blocks of our downtown strip. And that's worked just fine. But as you add a huge influx of more people visiting, more people remote working, you need to create more of a downtown district. Adding one-way streets is going to not only create three blocks going north on Chestnut Street, but also additionally, both sides of the streets on all of those cross streets. So you're not adding three blocks of downtown. You're actually adding about 12 blocks of downtown. And that creates the opportunity for more thriving businesses. It creates, you know, more jobs in this town, and it creates more desire to actually stay for more than a day or two. Hotels look at people's stays, and if they stay over three and a half days, they'll typically end up staying for a week. So we've got to cross over that barrier of being a weekend destination and get into the, you know, three and a half days, get past three and a half days. And I think by expanding the downtown district, instead of just being three blocks of one strip to being one-way streets, I think that that should be not only passed with the mobility plan, but expedited separately. So I really believe that one-way streets are the future for Mount Shasta, and a prospering downtown is better for all, the whole community. Thanks.
Thank you, Nian. Anybody else in the audience want to speak at the moment? Anybody online? No. We'll move on to...
Through the chair. So I didn't want to pull the ALTA plan out of the consent agenda. So can I make some comments on it now as a public comment?
Sure.
Okay, instead of pulling that item out. So I'd like to agree with the general thesis of Nian. Modernizing our transportation system is a really good idea. That ALTA plan that will no doubt go through now is a good one. I reread it again thoroughly. The issue to me simply is the financing of all the different components. And there are components, for instance, in the $12 million bike lane part of the plan that don't include the full build-out of the City Park to Lake Siskiyou Trail, which has been on the drawing boards for decades at this point, I think, and would be a wonderful thing to do. Point is, yeah, apply for grants, we may get some, but it's not going to cover all the different components of this plan. We, as a council, really need to look at putting something in front of the people. And yeah, it's a tax increase to help make this happen. Because without the money, Nian, best-laid plans don't happen. And that's what happened with the 2010 transportation plan. A lot of what's in here was put in writing, I think it was 2010.
2010?
2009.
Then very little of that happened, including repairing sidewalks and stuff like that. So, yeah.
Anybody else, any other council or staff comments?
On the consent agenda?
Oh, you want to move it to the consent agenda? Is that what you're asking? It's not on the consent agenda right now.
I kind of threw it in council comments.
It should be council comments.
I threw it there. John, Tessa, any comments?
Just wanted to commend Kathy and Todd and whoever else was helping with the Lola Dinner this last week. It was well-attended, and I think everyone had a great time, great food, lots of good information. So thank you.
There are no council committee updates, rather. Do you have comments that you wanted to make?
No.
Okay. And on the consent agenda, there... Does anybody have any clarifications or want to add, delete, pull out, separately consider anything that's in the consent agenda?
No, I want you to go ahead and read item seven, and we can act on it.
Okay. The city manager recommends approval of the following consent agenda items. All resolutions and ordinances on this agenda or adhered to shall be introduced or adopted as applicable by title only. In the full reading thereof is hereby waived. A, approval of the minutes, October 10, 2022, regular city council meeting. B, approval of disbursements, council payable October 12 and 18, 2022, and total gross payroll and taxes for the period ending October 2, 2022. C, the city manager's report on October 10, 2022. D, approval of the contract with the building inspector. E, Proposition 64, grant application letter of support and supporting resolution CCR 22 dash...
33.
Thirty-three. Thirty-three?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three? And F, adopt CCR-22-34, authorizing the city manager or the public works director to execute all master agreements, program supplemental agreements, fund exchange agreements, fund transfer agreements, and any amendments thereto with the California Department of Transportation. Any questions or...
Question?
Do I hear...
Okay, so yeah, I'll move to approve consent agenda items A through F by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And agenda item number eight is the public hearing for the increase of building department fees, and I believe Councilmember Clure is going to recuse herself. Am I correct?
Yeah, I seek to gain possible financial, either gain or loss from this, so I'll recuse myself.
Muriel, would you care to introduce this to us?
I will try.
You will try.
Mayor.
I appreciate your efforts.
So what you have before you, mayor and council, is proposed increase for building fees. We will be holding a public hearing for the proposed new building inspection fees, council to provide recommendation on the fee schedule, if any. City staff have prepared a master fee schedule for 2223 fiscal year. The master fee schedule is a finance planning document that contains all fees associated with applications and licensing of various uses, lots, and structures within the city limits of Mount Shasta. Due to the passage of time and an increase in cost to the city since the last adoption of building department-related fees, city staff are concerned that the city is not adequately recovering its costs. The aim of the proposed fee, feast, of the proposed fees is to recover at least 80% of the cost for the time that city staff spend on assisting with applications and processing various applications. So that schedule is before you?
It hasn't been updated since 2015.
2015.
Right. So it's seven years behind catching up.
Yes, indeed. Indeed. So it's definitely time.
And the basis that they're going to do, make these increases, is on the construction index?
Yes. It's basically, it's an index taking building cost inflation into account dating back from 2015 forward.
First of all, any questions before we go out to public comment?
No questions. Comment.
Any public comment on this in the audience? Come on up, Nian.
I know we need to make more money, and that's definitely a key thing. I don't know how many of you guys remember, over three years ago, I came in here talking about connection fees, and we determined that connection fees were actually ruled illegal, and so we changed those to developmental impact fees. And then those, so the building permit fees, for me to move my business from one building to another inside of Mount Shasta was well over $20,000, which was, made it prohibitive for me to actually expand, and I was going to move out of town with my business. And so I would say, you know, we definitely need to collect more money, but let's consider what we're doing here as far as, you know, how are we hampering innovation? Are we hampering new businesses by upping the fees? And so have a look at what those connection fees would be to turn a retail building into a restaurant or similar, and see if that's cost prohibitive for the restaurant, so, or for the, whatever business it is. I know we need to figure out new ways, and also we need to stay with the times as far as fees, but we also want to inspire incubation of new businesses.
Thank you, Nian. Kathy, anybody online? Well, let's bring it back to council. Any questions or comments amongst us?
I guess I should have asked before. So this is the sum total of all the different fees, Muriel? All of them are listed, right?
Okay. John, any input you'd like to give us? Yeah. Again, these are based on the CIC, the Construction Index costs, and it is just whatever those costs are for the past seven years from 2015. That's what the new increases are all across the board are being redone to. Any other, any questions?
No comment. I actually had a local contractor approach me and tell me that the city ought to be raising its fees. Our fees are much lower than surrounding cities, and the contractor really felt the fees were, that the City of Mount Shasta has been charging have been too little. I haven't had any contractor contact me to say that they would be opposed to these increases or that these increases would interfere or prevent proper development.
To the chair. How long are these fees going to hold? If we haven't updated in seven years, are we looking at five years? Would these basically the same, or is this going to be every other year, every three years? Is there any...
I think it's silent, related to when it would be, you know, re-upped.
Has staff, to your knowledge, Muriel, received any complaints from contractors objecting to the adjustment of these fees?
My staff says no.
Yeah, so one last question, Muriel. The, these fees are building permit fees of differing sorts. The thing that Nian was talking about, the impact fee, which might go by a different name now, that's not included. That's something different, right? And it's not included here?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that correct? Okay, yeah. I won't be sure either until now. Thank you.
I'll just say, and did we waive that temporarily?
The connection fees, along with the development impact fees, have a 75% reduction right now. And although every year, it takes the same percentage, the construction increment, for lack of a better term, into account, and those increases happen every year for those particular items. Again, connection fees, development impact fees.
If there are no further questions or discussion, I would move Resolution CCR 22-35, a resolution city council of the City of Mount Shasta adopting attached Exhibit A 2022, 2023, master building fees schedule.
Second.
Second. By title only.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With one abstention.
We need to go rescue Tessa. Okay, agenda item number nine, adoption of the draft walk-bike-ride mobility plan, and that's going to start with a report by Jeff Knowles. I assume he's coming in from afar. There you are. Hi there, Jeff. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. I cannot see you.
Well, that's probably a good thing.
Let's see. Mayor, members of council, I've got a short presentation to walk you through the edits that we've made based off of our last discussion, and then we'll open up back to get clarifying comments or questions from you. So let me go ahead and share that presentation and walk you through the edits we've made. And I also want to introduce, I've got a colleague with me today, Katie Saleen. Katie has been, probably you know her, she's been involved in many of our engagement activities, and has been my lieutenant along the way through every step of this process. So she's here as well, just to back me up if there are any detailed questions. She marshaled the revisions that were made to this final draft plan that you have before you. So she's here as well to be a resource to you. All right. Okay, I think you're seeing it now. So we're not going to go through every page of the plan like we did last time when we had the information item before council. Again, I'm Jeff Knowles with Alter Planning and Design, your consultant for the Mount Shasta Walk-Bike-Ride Mobility Plan. Want to walk you through what we did since that meeting on October 10 to where we got to today and this draft plan that you have before you. We've met with city staff, with council, with the planning commission, with our technical advisory committee. We received additional public comment through letters and emails, and also received local business support. There are nine letters of support as well for this plan. In general, there's a large support for the vision of the plan, for filling in sidewalk gaps, for having a robust safe routes to school program, and for trail development. We heard from the public and from different stakeholder groups, there's mixed interest in roundabouts. Some people very much in favor, some of them have concerns. Same with the one-way street conversion concept. We heard mostly concerns about snow removal and maintenance, paid parking, and impact on local taxes. We also heard that the plan was missing and a desire for more emphasis on the needs of older adults, particularly an interest in an on-demand shuttle. So some of the key changes, and then I'll walk through kind of in the chapters, what we did to revise the plan. In terms of infrastructure, crossing a potential roundabout was added at Highway 89 and Mount Shasta Boulevard. This is a location that Caltrans is already going to be working on and has programmed money at this location. They aren't developing a roundabout, so we're recommending that the city and potentially its partners work with Caltrans to look into that further. We're adding a bike boulevard on Cedar Street as a parallel to Pine, pedestrian activated beacon at Mount Shasta High School and Everett Memorial Highway to improve crossing over to the high, the high school. We updated the goals, the implementation tasks, updated typos that were caught and references, and made small text changes as requested by council, planning commission, TAC, and the public. Chapter one is the introduction, and here we updated the council members' names. We updated the planning area maps to include Alta Vista Manor and Escatton Manor, so showing where senior housing is located within the city. We also updated the relationship to show a connection to the capital budget. In chapter two, which is the vision for transportation in Mount Shasta... In Chapter Two, which is the vision for transportation in Mount Shasta, we changed some of the wording. Goal three, we added off-street trails reference. And Goal 3C, we added daylighting Castle Creek as a goal. We added Goal 4D, which was really to show that we wanted to link shifting some vehicle trips to walking bicycling with the goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Goal 5D, we added assessment districts and other local funding opportunities for feasibility study. This one was tied into just mentioning specifically parking meters, which we heard loud and clear. There was a negative reaction to that idea. This is, I think, a conversation that I heard or heard you say at the beginning of this council meeting, this need for additional local sources of funding in addition to external sources. So we just wanted to make sure that that was clearly stated, that no matter what that looks like, the city needs to explore all available opportunities. Added Goal 5F to explore the feasibility of the one-way, one-lane street concept in your downtown. And 6B, we updated this to say, seek a partnership with local transit agency to explore the feasibility of providing on-demand or downtown shuttle service. This again was very widely cited in our public review period. I think the difficulty there is figuring out who's going to run it and how's it going to be paid for, but that's something that we wanted to make sure was included as a desire. Chapter three was community voice. We updated the public input map titles. To be clear, council member Sterns had some questions and concerns about those maps, so we wanted to clarify those. And we added an additional detail about the Community Resource Center, Escatton, their involvement in the community engagement, so clarify that. Chapter four was the analysis. We added definitions for some of the jargon that was included in the public draft about transverse and continental crosswalks to clarify what those, what those were referring to. We clarified the key takeaway about our level of traffic stress results. Meant that the existing network does not meet the needs of children, seniors, novice bicyclists and people walking around. We added a definition of truncated domes, and those are the, the kind of the tactile warning devices used at curb ramps so that people who have visibility impairments can detect that they're entering the roadway. And we clarified the description of sidewalk presence map. So that's a map that we included and showed where you're, where you have and don't have sidewalks and also the widths. Chapter five is the chapter on your recommendations. So again, we added in the Sager Street Bike Boulevard project. We outlined that there were quick build options available for your Class Four separated bikeways. So all of those can be implemented less expensively and much quicker as buffered bikeways. And so we put that out as an option that you, you as a city can pursue if the separated bikeways, if some of the trade-offs or the difficulty with maintaining those, maintaining those during snow events is just too difficult. I think that there is a very viable and good option of just making those buffered bikeways. There's room for that. It will have noticeable improvement for people bicycling. And so we wanted to leave that option on the table. We added the locations of the roundabout recommendations, clarified where those were included in the plan. We also referenced to change stop sign directions as a bike boulevard treatment to make it easier for people walking bicycling to use those boulevards. We added new maps showing the Midtown Greenway and also the proposed trail connections to Weed and to Dunsmere. We had a conversation at the council meeting about meandering sidewalks, and so we've updated the language to make the policy change to prohibit those or be reviewed on a case-by-case basis instead of a blanket prohibition. We added receding rapid flashing beacons, number 42 at Everett Memorial Highway and Mount Shasta High School. And we've also added programmatic recommendations to partner with the Mount Shasta Public Library to offer bike tools that can be checked out by the public. And finally modified paid parking feasibility to focus more broadly on evaluating various city funding streams. In terms of implementation, Chapter Six, we changed the terminology for some of the high priority projects. So now you have short-term high priority and long-term high priority. And so these are still the opportunities that we think are important for the city to pursue. It's just the cost and complexity of some of those projects. So that's been clarified. And then the implementation, we've made it clear that the Public Works Director needs to be involved in many of these implementation tasks. We updated the Lake Street project description. This is one that's already been identified in the State Transportation Improvement Program. There's money set aside for this on Lake Street and the city can go in and modify the scope to improve biking conditions and sidewalk conditions. We've added a reference to the Active Transportation Committee as a partner, modified the paid parking study recommendation and added a trail development task to that. All of those edits had implications into the appendices, so those segment-by-segment costs, intersection costs and cost assumptions, those were updated as well. And so we're really pleased to bring this to you tonight for your consideration for adoption. And we know it's only the beginning phase. The real hard work has yet to begin. So we appreciate the opportunity to work and collaborate with you and with the public on this process. And with that, I open it back to you to, you have your questions. Thank you.
Well, first, councilors, any questions for Jeff?
Jeff, before I make any questions of you or ask any questions of you, I just want to say a good job. I think you, you hit all or basically all the items that we discussed at the last meeting. I do have, of course, one of the hot topics at the last meeting was paid parking. So I'm, I have a small tweak suggestion for page 60 of the agenda, page 14 of the plan on Item E, where it says evaluate the feasibility of parking meters. I'd like to insert, I'd like to suggest that we insert the word and desirability. So it reads evaluate the desire, the feasibility and desirability of parking meters in downtown Mount Shasta. I see feasibility and desirability being not necessarily the same thing. So that's, would that be agreeable to Alta? You want, you want me to cite the page?
Yes. No, I, yeah, I think that seems like a very minor and easy edit to make to clarify.
Okay. And then on page 40, and I think that's page 40 of the plan, right-hand column, seven lines down, there's reference to McDonald Avenue. And I think that's a continuing typo. I'm guessing that should be McLeod Avenue.
Yes, you are correct.
So hopefully that's another minor.
Yeah.
All right. And then third and final, can we add, looking into the feasibility of a roundabout at Everett Memorial and Shasta Avenue, just above the high school and on McLeod Avenue at about Washington? I, earlier this week, I guess it was last week, I counted no less than 15 signs in a two or three block area that talked about slowing down on McLeod Avenue below that Washington Avenue site or Washington Street site. So I would appreciate at least including look or looking at the feasibility of roundabouts at, at those two locations.
Those, that's new information for us. So I think we'd have to, we'd have to go back to staff and have a conversation about the implications that those would have. That would be a pretty big ripple effect into the document itself, changing maps, changing the tables at this point. So I'm not prepared at this point to, to add them unless directed by council and staff.
Or perhaps we could make reference to those, I think it was four, four or five specific locations.
We could add them to the list.
And just, and add, you know, yeah, either add to the list or, or including but not limited to.
Sure.
One of our favorite legal phrases.
Seems like a good solution, a good compromise there. Can you give me those locations again, Councilmember Sterns?
Yes. Everett Memorial and Shasta Avenue. That's Everett Memorial Highway and Shasta Avenue. And the second one would be McLeod Avenue and Washington.
Yeah, I would, I would be surprised if, if it fit at that location, but.
I don't know about McLeod Avenue and Washington. Everett Memorial and Shasta is very, very wide up there, so there would.
It is wider there. I'm less concerned about that one, McLeod and Washington. Like, the dimensions may not just work without taking some private property to fit it in. So, yeah. I think explore the feasibility. Yes, I think that we can add some, some language that would include those locations.
And I have one more question for you. After we adopt this plan, how can we keep you involved?
Todd knows where to find me. I think I've been on his speed dial the last couple, couple weeks here.
I was hoping to keep you involved for more than a couple weeks, like over a period of time.
You know, I think that, you know, we're here, Katie and I are here. The, the good news is that Alta has been, I think it's still not, I think it's still working its way through, but you know, we are a firm that's being considered for the countywide, the Siskiyou County Active Transportation Plan, which has a lot of interface here. And so hopefully if that works, works out well, I think that we will see more of each other through that process. But yes, I think that we could, you know, we could work with you. I think Todd's already been in discussions with help advising him on some of the external grant sources that are out there and maybe we could support the city in applying for some of those grants that are, that are going to become available. So, yeah, we'd love to stay involved and help you implement this plan step by step.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John?
I said my piece before, so that's, that's what you did. Lots of good stuff. Love the plan.
Got to find the money.
I do think there'll be some grant money that would be attainable, but it will.
I do think some grant monies would be gainable, but I don't think it'll cover the cost of the, we're anywhere near the full cost of this, this plan. And so, you know, if the people want to do what's in this plan, then they should be willing to pay for it. So, yep.
John?
I'm red colorblind, so some of these maps take about an extra half hour.
I bet.
For me to figure out the colors.
I bet.
There are a lot of similar colors. But as far as what we're approving today is, are we just set in stone on what bike lanes we're actually choosing? That's, that's a given right now? We approve it that's the Class Four or can we go a little cheaper that they don't need to be as fancy?
Yeah, some of those Class Four ones, what was added in this was the Class Four fixed at $311,000 a mile down to 170 or something like that for just painted separations to, to save costs.
Yeah, okay, cool. Yeah, I just want to make sure we got some leeway that way or nothing's set in stone other than we, we all agree that this is awesome. So.
Well, and actually, Kathy, with Councilmember Stern's requested input into this, does that mean we should put this off for another meeting before we go to public?
You can adopt it with the changes as requested. You can adopt it with the changes as requested.
Okay. Well, then let's, let's move to public comment. Anybody in the audience like to speak on this or online?
This is when you should have spoke on it, Nian.
If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand now. Our first speaker will be Vicki Gold.
Good evening. I like the amendments that Tim offered. I think that makes sense. I like the language feasibility or desirability with regard to the parking. I'm wondering if, is, if you have considered a grant to build a parking lot where, right behind Parker's Plaza, a two-level parking lot that would be paid parking, you could give access to locals with some kind of a pass and, you know, I don't know if you charge a dollar or, you know, by the time, but it would save so much. And I think you really are going to have future problems with parking regardless of whether you adopt parking meters as the solution or not, especially, you know, we have new projects going in with no parking allowance because they've been grandfathered in. And I do think, I, I, I bet there are some grants available because that would encourage people to at least drive to town and park and not be driving around. And if you had a shuttle, that would work beautifully. You could even have one of those at the Roseburg property, another, you know, covered shelter and perhaps one at the north end of town, too. So people would not have to be driving into town with their cars. And I think it would really appeal to the state or the feds, seeing that you have a reason to have a parking lot. You could include electric bicycles or electric cars in that parking lot. But I think that would, there would be much community support for that. I've spoken with quite a few people who think that would be a logical location and I think it, it would be desirable to have this as part of the plan. I know you can't add something major at this point, but I'd certainly like to see the city entertain that concept. I know you understand that. I, I think the community is really against the parking meters and I don't think they really are that much in favor of the one-way streets. But the rest of it is admirable and I think very useful for the community. And I just think that one location could make a huge difference for a double-level parking lot. Would have the additional benefit of blocking the cell tower and the radiation from that cell tower to the downtown area, which comes right through that alleyway behind or next to Napa. And there are many people who are sensitive to EMF radiation and that would be very helpful. So thank you.
Anybody else online? Well, let's bring it back to council. Any comments anybody else has relative to this plan, relative to how you?
I'll do it. Ready for a motion? Okay, so I'll move to adopt the Walk Bike Ride Mount Shasta Mobility Plan presented by, developed and presented by Alta Consulting Group, I guess by title only.
With amendments?
Oh, excuse me. With suggested amendments and changes of Tim Stern's as discussed earlier.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda Item Number 10 is the discussion of possible action on an increase in salary for the non-represented staff. Muriel, would you introduce this to us, please?
Sure. During the last six months, council has approved increased salaries for city department heads. These increases in pay were binged more against the city of Weed's salary structure. In order to maintain parity for non-representative staff at the city of Mount Shasta, I took a look at Mount Shasta's job titles that are the same or comparable with similar positions at the city of Weed. In a couple of cases, there were no direct, no directly comparable positions at the city of Weed, so the proposed adjusted salary ranges are based on the following methodology. Using the new rate for the new, for the firefighter positions as a starting. Using the new rate for the new, for the firefighter positions as a starting point, as you remember, the firefighters were given, uh, increases, uh, during union wage negotiation. After that, we applied the number derived from the Cough Compensation Study Report and the position placement as a guide, and then placed every non-represented, represented position in their respective class range number for the position. Among positions, there are a two and a half percent difference going from one range, range placement between each step, A through E. Additionally, there is a 2% difference between each class range number. We then determined the percentage difference at the E step for each position, starting from the firefighter classification. Next, the adjusted rates were calculated for each position, and that was compared with, with each positions at the E step rate. Using that same format, we applied the same logic to the City of Weed's rates for their positions. The result of that, the analysis resulted in Weed's actual and calculated, uh, rates being the same or more than all of the Mount Shasta positions. The only positions we are able to change at this time are the positions that are non-union represented positions. They are as follows. If I can find it. The Public Works Supervisor. The Administrative Supervisor. The Accounting Assistance. The Office Assistant. The Administrative Assistant Deputy City Clerk and the City Planner. In order to main, maintain morale, parity among management class positions and line level staff members, it's staff's opinion that we continue to benchmark our salaries with similar salaries within Siskiyou County. I would like, um, council to consider this and, and to approve this and request this be retroactive to July 1st, 2022.
Counsel, any questions?
Just curious why back to July?
That was the same time that the, uh, fire positions received their raises.
Okay, gotcha.
Through the chair? All right, so I really have no problem with the salary increase, in case you're wondering. I think I've voted for all the salary increases in the past and, and any, any given category. Is, you have to help me, Muriel, here. So this, to me, sounds like a, a pretty solid example of where we need to take a look at our budget being adjusted. And I, and I know timing-wise, we always had a mid-year budget adjustment review, so that would be in January or thereabouts, February. But I, I kind of remember doing it midstream if there was something large like this, um, changing the budget. So are we going to be more in deficit? I think it's, it behooves us to know what effect this will have on, and even if we approve this tonight, can we take a look at our adjusted budget considering this increase in spending and then the $9,000 for the fire department? I think that was substantial enough. For the match, the grant matching, we, we approved.
It was out of a separate fund. That's measure A, which is specifically earmarked for equipment.
Oh, okay. Then never mind that. Perfect. Yeah, so that was, that was my concern.
Well, what I can say, um, for, uh, council's information, uh, we're just starting on the, uh, audit for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. It looks as if our, uh, net income, per se, is going to be about $750,000, added to the, the amount that we already have in reserve, which is, is substantial as well. So our reserve amount is going to be, uh, very substantial, I would say, uh, to the tune between 25 and 30% is where it's going to wind up.
So as our CFO, you feel comfortable with these raises?
I, I do, indeed. The cost, uh, for the fiscal year, for the fiscal year that we're in right now for these increases, fully loaded, is a little over $147,000.
Uh, just out of curiosity, when was the last time, and maybe we don't know this, but the last time that a non-COLA or a non-step increase for these positions were given?
I can't even remember the date, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, I think it's a long time coming.
They've received, they've received particular raises based on, uh, some of the, um, MOUs that happened, those particular types of percentages, but not since, um, it's been a long time since we really looked at the classification study in those positions and really used that information to determine, um, where people were placed, um, compared to one another within the, within the City of Mount Shasta's organization.
I really liked the way that you did that comparison when there weren't positions available to do a direct, that was pretty smart.
Thank you. Well, thank you.
John? Okay. Um, Muriel, did I understand you correctly that on an annualized basis, the sum total of what's being recommended for the increases is about $147,000 a year?
That's correct.
In relative to John Stackfleth's request for a, a budget, uh, adjustment, is it reasonable, once you get to the place where we have a full accounting of last year's numbers, that somewhere with reasonable time for, because there's a heck of a lot of effort to get, get to those numbers, plus we're heading into the holiday season here relatively soon, that we can, you can come back to us with a, where are we? Because there've been a number of big chunks of money that have been spent and?
Well, that would certainly happen at mid-year.
And am I correct that you're requesting one sooner?
Well, I feel a lot better because the, um, the surplus for '22 ends up being surprisingly bigger than you thought, right?
Yeah.
And so then we're at, we're gonna have a?
We budgeted, we budgeted at about $225,000, and we're at about $750,000.
So surprisingly large surplus for last fiscal year, which leaves us with a reserve, not on a percentage basis, but on, over $2 million. Yeah, makes me feel a lot better. And so we were projecting a deficit, as you all may recall.
Which I still think we'll have this year.
Well, maybe.
Which is still where, which is still where we are for projections, so. But even that taken into consideration, um, the, the reserve is certainly far above.
Is, is less affected because it's such a large reserve. Yeah, I'm in no rush if it, if it's more appropriate just to do the mid-year, uh, review, that's fine. Plus you'll have better numbers on this current year's revenues.
I'll have a better handle on where sales tax is going. I'll have a better handle on where TOT is.
I'm gonna retract my request.
Okay, thank you. Well, if we're finished with council questions, let's move to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak? Is there anybody online who would like to speak on this item? Well, let me bring it back to council. Uh, any additional comments or?
I would move that we approve the requested amendments.
All second.
Salary adjustments.
All second.
And that would be effective back to July 1, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, now that that has passed, though, I want to make one comment about one of the items that was, uh, that was in that list of jobs to get an approval, which was the planner. And the planner did not get, uh, and I, uh, a significant increase, and I will bring up for future agenda items, a discussion about an increase in the planner, because we are having a hard time getting one. So with that said, we're going on to Agenda Item Number 11. Uh, the reconstruction of Lake Street.
And I think we're being abandoned. The, the audience is abandoning us.
Agenda Item Number 11 is the reconstruction of Lake Street to perform traffic calming and seek a transportation grant rider. Muriel, once again, if you can do the best you can with this, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, actually, I'm fairly well-prepared for this one. As Todd had mentioned in his, um, bi-weekly report that was written for October 12th, he had mentioned some of this, some of these things before, so this is not, nothing new for you, but now we're, we're trying to formalize something to get somebody to, and I'll read this. The city is, has a funded state transportation improvement program, STIP, project for the reconstruction of Lake Street. Under the current plan, Lake Street would be reconstructed with the existing roadway width and without bike lanes. Total funding for the project totals approximately $2 million. Under the proposal, construction is scheduled to begin in fiscal year 23, 24. Actually, some of the planning on this has already started, so we've had some, some expenses for pace engineering, um, already for this, for, for some of the, the pre-work going into some of this. Uh, we have received numerous complaints about speeding on Lake Street. While the Mount Shasta PD has aggressively ticketed drivers who speed excessively, speeding on Lake Street is still too common of an occurrence. After looking at design solutions that may address the speeding issues without causing issues with snow plowing, uh, for instance, uh, speed humps and some of those kinds, kinds of things, or leading to additional crashes during snow events, it has been determined that traffic calming can be achieved through narrowing, uh, the excessive lane width on Lake Street, for example, 16 feet, to a minimal American Association of State and Highway Traffic Official, I'm not gonna say that, uh, standards between 10 and 12, depending on how many feet, depending on the preponderance of delivery vehicles using the roadway. Roadway bulbous may also be considered. Further, the city is preparing to adopt this, the Active Transportation Plan, which was done tonight. One of the short-term goals is to add buffered bike lanes on Lake Street. The addition of buffered bike lanes can be accomplished with the existing right-of-way and the excess right-of-way that will now be gained through the reduction of lane widths. Addition of buffered bike lanes on Lake Street will capture latent demand for biking on Lake Street. With the addition of bikers using protected bike lanes on Lake Street will create added benefit of further reducing speeds at the presence of, uh, more bicycles and the presence of more bicycles, and pedestrians, pedestrians tend to lead to slower driving coupled with lanes width reductions 2022 with the plan. So what we need to do is amend, um, the STIP, uh, program that we've already been approved for, to see if we can amend it to, um, include, um, some of these changes. So we would need to amend SEQA documents, file a STIP amendment with the state to halt the plans, specifications and engineering, PS and E, phase and seek an additional $500,000 in design funds through a Caltrans planning grant application, which opens on January 15th. An estimate for the accomplished transportation grant rider will cost the city between $10,000 and $15,000. By all accounts, the city has a very strong shot at winning this grant, as the project has the dual objectives of reducing crashes and improving active transportation, two of the state's most prized transportation goals. If awarded, the reconstruction of Lake Street with the proposed implementation would happen in 2020, 24, 25, basically a year later. So, um, I think this is a, a really good chance to take, uh, the mobility plan, uh, things into account, and like this says, um, we do have, I, I believe, a very strong shot at winning the grant to, to amend, um, that STIP project to, um, to make these changes.
Questions? Counselors?
Uh, just to be clear, the $10,000 to $15,000 that the city would spend would be for a grant rider?
That's correct.
To, to get the, the large grant. And do you, we have a grant rider in mind, or would it go out?
It would, um, between $10,000 and $15,000 needs to go out.
Okay.
For an RFP.
Thank you.
But yeah, I, I do know that there are already people interested.
Oh, cool.
Well, there is nobody in the audience, so they're not gonna ask any questions. And Catherine, do we have anybody online? You're, you're behind that, I can't see you, sorry. Let's bring it back to council then. How, how do you feel about this? I mean, it seems to be kind of a no-brainer, but John?
Okay, I just, yeah, it's no-brainer, I just want to clarify the timeframe, so I can answer questions at the bar on?
Yeah. Me, too.
So when would, so right now, we're looking at construction, if we get through everything with the grant writing and everything over the next year?
It would be, it would be a year later than?
So 2024 would probably be when the ground gets broken?
Yes, two years from now.
Two years from now.
Yeah.
Yeah, which we were already a year out just for the plane reconstruction piece of it, but with this, this added design and the purposeful, um, reduction of width and the adding of bicycle lanes and making sure the sidewalks are on both sides, um, which, as you know, Lake Street only has one side with, um, sidewalks. That whole corridor would then be, um, completely renovated.
Thank you, just wanted to know what to tell?
Yeah.
People that were pushing for this for the last couple of years.
Through, through the chair? So this is for E, East Lake Street from Everett Memorial through to Chestnut or to the Boulevard?
It would be from, I believe, it's from Rockefeller, around the corner, all the way down to Chestnut.
Nice, okay.
That's a good idea, from my, from where my bar is, I see people racing from the, from the traffic light up the hill, a lot.
I used to live on that street, so I, I can attest to some of the issues on that street.
So I think we're looking for a motion.
We are.
Yeah, and I move that, uh, the, that we, uh, adopt the proposed STIP amendment for the reconstruction of Lake Street, uh, to narrow the lanes and calm the traffic, as set forth in the, uh, staff report, Agenda 12, by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Second amendment, do we need a second motion for the, it looks like we do, for the, um, grant writer? Kathy? Okay, I'll do that one, Tim. Motion to approve, uh, I move to approve the hiring of a transportation professional specializing in grants to write a Caltrans transportation planning grant with the not-to-exceed amount of $15,000 for the salary of the grant writer?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. There were no outside meetings, uh, future agenda items, as I said earlier, I'll start off with this. I would, uh, like to put on the agenda as soon as possible, a staff presentation back to council about increasing the salary of the planning department or, or the planner, as we are striking out, trying to get anybody to be a planner at the current salary level, and?
I don't even know if that's it.
May, may I suggest, if, uh, I don't mean to interrupt, but if I, the city manager has absolute right to put anything on the agenda that, that he deems appropriate to come before the city council, and it may be appropriate for him to go ahead and, and schedule that. I think you're just inviting him to do so, um, but he will presumably come back with a full-blown proposal.
I agree, and I think he might have ideas.
He does.
I hope so, because despite a pay raise, maybe we can get some buffers. You're there to let the, some buffers, so the planner actually has some time to do the work, like I said, compared to? I said, compared to all the emails and phone calls demanding immediate attention.
Well, there's a couple of buffers. One is no more Weed sharing, or wait, that might have come out wrong, no more sharing with the town of Weed. And relative to buffers on the telephone tree, that's an interesting idea.
Maybe just some robo-answering.
Well, there's, yeah, there's a way to, certainly a way to do that. That is under Todd's purview. I try not to micromanage, or I suggest we make suggestions to him, but that certainly sounds like a good one.
Anybody else?
To the chair?
Yeah.
As we approach, I'm kind of lost on the timeline, but since our city manager has been here now for quite some time, I think we should start thinking about doing a formal evaluation process.
Right.
And either doing a committee of some of us and allowing our city manager to choose whether he wants it to be open or closed, I think is a right that he has, so, yeah.
Everybody feel like that's a good thing to do?
I do think it is time to do an annual evaluation. We've already taken care of the second part of that, which was priorities for the following year, so I think we just need to do a performance evaluation.
Yeah.
And we have used a couple of standardized forms in the past, which I think we could continue to use if that's agreeable with other council members.
Perhaps. I'd like to see them first.
Oh, well, that makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
Any other future agenda items to put on or take off?
Going to suggest that we amend the current moratorium on short-term rentals to allow right away, short-term rentals in the commercially-zoned areas. Think there's going to be an agenda item coming up, I mean, yeah, an agenda item coming up regarding an appeal, and this would have been avoided if we actually had a clear short-term rental ordinance, which I have a feeling will allow short-term rentals in commercial zones, so while that's being formed...
Do we know where the planning committee is regarding that?
To me, it looks like it's a big maybe that they'll have this figured out by February.
My sense is that the city manager is trying to make short-term rental ordinance priority, getting, making a priority to get to us a draft short-term rental ordinance, and I haven't heard anything to the contrary.
It is tentatively scheduled for the planning commission to hear on November 15.
Okay, thank you.
The short-term rental ordinance draft is scheduled to be heard by the planning commission on November 15.
November 15.
Okay, well, then I'll drop that one.
Okay. Yeah, because if they're not, let's...
Anything else, folks? Looks like it's coming to us in the foreseeable future.
Yeah, that's good. On that... Be good? We're adjourned. Thank you.